Okay.
I'm gonna call the meetings to order. This is the November work session for the School of Consolidated Board of Education. We are out in Cliff in the home bedroom in since Healey, Mexico. It is November eighteenth and five thirty one. Welcome, members of the administration, fellow board members, teachers, administrators, parents, students, thank you for joining us. Patrick Lee, please do your hand.
Absolutely. Mrs. Montenegro.
Here.
Dr. Diaz.
She's here, Eiffel.
Myself, here, Mr. McMillan, here, and Mrs. Clinton.
Here.
Thank you. First, I want our agenda's consideration and approval of our work session agenda. I will open the court for motion.
A motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Right, then, Mr. McMillan, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in paper signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion passes. Next item on our agenda is the Cliff Student Body presentation. We have Luke Alsop president and Malcolm Ullery the second vice president.
Good afternoon, everyone. Madam President.
It's you.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Good afternoon, Madam President, members of board, Mr. Watkins, Ms. Ferris, Ms. Mr. Alvarez. I'd like to thank you all for coming out. My vice president, I'm Luke Alsop, my vice president Malcolm, he was sick and was unable to come tonight. But he intended to, so I now like to present our Cliff Student Council update for this year thus far. Maybe, there we go. So this is our twenty twenty-five officers. Myself, Luke Alsop is the president. Malcolm Ullery the second is the vice president, he was not there for the picture. Zachary Edgleston is our secretary. Ryan Tedford is our treasurer, and Paisley Donaldson is our historian. This year at the bonfire, we had numerous activities. We had fundraisers via TSA and golf. They each provided food. They did well this year. Our activities that we had included chess, tic-tac-toe, Jenga, volleyball, tug-of-war, cornhole, and numerous other activities. Here's some more pictures from the event, and it was a it was a success.
Mr. Alsop, how long did the fire smolder?
I'm not exactly sure, but it smoldered for a good while, but it usually does. For Fall Fest this year, we had a successful decorating of the gym and the stage for the Fall Fest. Malcolm and myself were the emcees for the night. We introduced the Fall Fest. We had a wonderful cast of Fall Fest royalty this year. Here they are. And it was another successful event that we hosted. The upcoming events that we have for the year are decorating the lobby for Christmas, which we've done in the past. We'll decorate the entire lobby. We put up a Christmas tree and we hang stuff from the from the ceiling and just make it look nice and festive. We have the themes also during that week, the week of the eighteenth through the twenty-first. We have dress-up days, we have a white-out for snow day. For a um, and then we have a pajama day, North Pole Day, where you dress up as anything from the North Pole, Santa, elves, et cetera. And then we have an ugly sweater day. So that's always a fun week, always fun to dress up. For homecoming, we have activities for the week of January. We have, again, numerous dress-up days. And then we have activities for every day at lunchtime during the week that are always fun and always get a good amount of engagement. They're just a fun time to let loose. And we have homecoming coronation and the dance on January eighteenth. We will host that and do the do the coronation and, again, just another fun activity that we have. And I believe that is all. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Alsop? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we have additional presentations during the work session? This is the rest of the team.
So we have your podcasting for Cliff. We do the Cliff Hangar Podcast. And we were encouraged, this is for a grant. It's been a lot of fun. It was kind of hard to learn. Because we had no prior experience. We just kind of started to have the experience. It was fun to learn that. I had a lot of fun, and we had to set up a whole.
Can I call you?
Yes.
Will you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I am Jasper Alsop.
I'm Andrew Edgleston.
I'm Hunter Kowchuk.
We had to set up a we had to set up a whole room for our podcast. We painted a back storage room in one of the old portables for our recording room. Just a plain blue background and some basic stuff for soundproofing. It's it works pretty good, gets the job done. We recorded August, September, October, and November podcasts, so we have four up so far. And each of them are ten minutes, ten plus minutes. And they cover the CTS here at Cliff, which are BPA, TSA, FCCLA, and FFA. And those are our main topics that we usually cover.
Yeah, and like Jasper said, it was really hard learning curve. We had to learn how to work a camera, had to learn how to talk into the camera and not be awkward. We had to do some, we filmed some special things, like Grand County Fair. And we filmed the Veterans Day program for like parents who couldn't come out to see their kids and everything like that. And oh, we've really learned to love filming everything overall.
It was a lot of fun, and we appreciate all the support we got for it, so.
What type of camera do you guys use?
A Canon?
Canon.
Canon video camera.
They just use it.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Where is your podcast? Where does it go out on? Is it done just on social media or do you have certain other media that goes out?
On YouTube and Facebook. And you can also find it on our school website.
Okay, what's the name of your podcast?
The Cliff Hangar Podcast.
Cliff Hangar?
I see what you did there.
I thought it was.
That's great. Whose idea was that one?
It was the name of it was the name of our old newsletter that they used to do out here. And I remembered that, so that's why I wanted to introduce or bring back into the community.
My sweet.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Zachary Edgleston, and I'm part of the design team. There's a couple other members, Brooklyn Burger, Dennis Keerly, and Koya Finch. They couldn't be here tonight, but all the four of us all make up the design team. And we just work and design things like these, and we sell them at the Healey Valley Farmers Market for a profit. Again, it's for the grant thing. We had to create a business. And our computer science teacher, Miss Agnew, recently got a laser cutter, so we thought we'd try and focus our business around that. So we have been cutting earrings, keychains, ornaments, and what else? Cheese boards, yeah. Miss Agnew has helped us design little designs to cut onto cheese boards, almost like as a souvenir for people passing through to get. And all of these designs have been made in Adobe Illustrator, which was a little difficult to learn. We'd never worked with it before. But once we finally got over that initial learning curve, it was a pretty pretty good. You can see all of our designs here. One I personally worked on were these Zia Symbol hearts and these little ones here. That took about two hours to just finish up both of them in Adobe Illustrator. And cutting them out takes thirty seconds at most, these little ones. It's it's pretty nice, it's fast, so we can get a lot out, so we can sell a lot at our farmers market. It's good for profits. It's the money goes towards our TSA chapter, correct? And our TSA chapter, like the team before me said, is one of our CTSOs here. And it's one I'm personally a part of, so I'm happy to be working with all of this.
And how much do you set those for?
I'm not too sure. So. Ten dollars, okay. Ten dollars for these. And then these keychains are five dollars. And then the ornaments were eight, nine, or eight?
Those are eight.
Yeah, eight.
They're one layer.
Those are the ornaments. Can you show us the ornaments?
Yes. So these are. So these are the ornaments we've made. I helped personally with this design. It's just our Cliff logo. If you want to see, these are actually for you guys. So we can keep these.
No, we got away. Go that way from there.
Got it. I'll go buy new earrings.
And that one to Mrs. Montenegro right there in the middle.
I'll do it. Thank you.
Just go ahead and set aside some earrings for me, please. Not for me, for my wife. I'll need to take a pair of those before I leave today.
Any other questions?
Do you have any other plans using what you've learned now to expand to your business or expand beyond what you're building now? You said that you have a pretty quick turnaround to create those, and then you had a pretty good profit. What is the plans for more and how much is it costing each of you besides time when you make one of these?
So as for future plans, we want to expand past just the wood designs. We have cork and we have future plans to work on like leather. Because the way the laser cutter works is we can adjust the power so that it doesn't cut straight through the leather or straight through the cork. So that way we can engrave and cut on those things. So things like coasters or engravings on wallets is kind of what we've been looking forward to. But we were going to do that once we got a little more familiar with the program. And now that we've gotten a lot a lot better at it, better, sorry, we plan on hoping to expand towards that. And these these ones here are all birch wood that we've been cutting, and then. As for time, usually, we only have about one hour for our class period to work on these, at least I do. And then.
We don't have time to do any of that.
Yeah, and then there's also the time it takes to paint these. You have the different colors. And then we have a sealer, so like a protective coat we put over it so that it doesn't wear and tear. Because wood isn't exactly super durable. And then price-wise, how much is one inch?
Fifteen dollars.
Fifteen dollars, so we can get about.
It depends on what it is.
Yeah.
Nine ornaments.
Yeah, about nine ornaments, a pretty decent sized sheet of wood for about fifteen dollars. And then we take that and we put tape over it so that there's not splintering along the edges. So tape on the front, so try and prevent stuff like that.
Very cool.
That's very cool. All done? All right.
Any other questions or Mr. Best?
I just have a question. You say we're the design team, and then you you mentioned that it was a class.
Yes.
So is it it's a class or a club or bowl?
It's a little bit of both, so, like I said, these since profits go towards TSA, I love helping out with this, so it can get profits since I'm part of that.
What's TSA?
Technology Student Association. So we have presented here before with our solar spring cars and the dragsters. And then. So this year, we're hoping to get some good profits and continue to grow our TSA chapter. And then there's three of us of the design team is in one class period, and then Koya Finch, she's in a different class period. And I know she focuses more on like these like hand-drawn designs almost. So she's got like a drawing tablet and she'll draw the designs because she's pretty artistic. And then she also helps paint a lot because, again, yeah. So it is.
A little bit of.
Yeah, a little bit of, and we've got to make sure we communicate with each other in a way we don't interfere with each other's projects.
All right.
So so all all the boys that presented are in the same class, so we have lots going on at once. Plus, they're getting ready for their TSA contests. So we can't work on this every day.
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
And the ornament. Does that conclude that portion of the presentations for the students? Thank you. Thank you so much. Motion for adjournment from the work session, please. Motion.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Mr. McMillan. All of the since or Patrick Lee, do a roll call.
Absolutely. Mrs. Montenegro.
Yes.
Dr. Diaz. Myself, yes.
Mr. McMillan. Yes.
And Mrs. Clinton.
Yes. We are adjourned, and it is five forty-seven. We'll start the regular board meeting right at six o'clock. Thank you.
I'm gonna do the best I can. Now, it's my talk time. That's our special.
Oh, no.
My talk time will be eight minutes. I got four because I've got enrollment.
I don't know. I don't know if that's that.
So I'm gonna squish some of the rest. But that's my goal.
I'm gonna call the meetings to order. This is the November school board meeting with the Silver Consolidated Board of Education. We're out here in the community at the, I wanna say high school, but this is the whole school. So thank you for having us as always. It's always a pleasure to get to come out, for most of us. It's a little bit of a challenge for them, but we're gonna work on getting, making that better. Um, okay. Welcome, members of administration, fellow board members, members of the community, administrators, students, parents. Thank you for joining us. Patrick Lee, please do a roll call.
Mrs. Montenegro.
Here.
Dr. Diaz.
Dr. Diaz.
myself here. Mr. McMillan.
Here.
And Mrs. Clinton.
Here. For the notes that you'll want that Mr. or Dr. Diaz phoned in, thank you. Please write us for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the Mexico Black State. Right in the back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is review of approval of minutes. In your board packet, you will find four minutes from our October 21st, 2024 work session and ready to reading, as well as the finance committee meeting from October 17th. I open the floor for a motion.
Madam President, I move to motion approval.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Next item is consideration and approval of today's agenda. I open the floor for motion. Motion. Motion by Mrs. Montenegro. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Information and presentations are non-action items. We have programs and presentations tonight. Mr. Bob Carson with the Cuana's to become the month was not able to join us. So in his place, we will have Mr. Hawkins to make the awards.
All right. Bryson, where are you? There you are.
Hey.
So if Mr. Carson was here, he would speak about the support that the Cuana's gives to all our schools and how it's a privilege and opportunity for them to recognize students throughout the district every month. And here in Cliff, Bryson, whenever I say your name, I hear your dad saying your name on the basketball court. So I always wanna echo it in the same way. So Bryson is the ninth grader. You were selected a student of the month, and there was some information shared from this all stuff that she gathered from the faculty to really let us know the type of student you are. First and foremost, as you all know, Bryson is the Cliff Schools' Student of the Month for the month of November. As a freshman, Bryson has already proven himself to be an outstanding student and athlete. Quiet and respectful, Bryson consistently strives to do his best, both academically and in athletics. He has already earned a spot on the A B honor roll for the first nine weeks. Way to go. And continues to balance his academics with commitment to sports. Bryson was a team leader on the cross-country team. How'd y'all do?
At state, we didn't really place, but.
You made such a thing.
We made it to state. I don't remember what place we got, but we all did really good.
Yeah, I think you did really good if you made it down there. And is a vital bridge, Bryson is a vital bridge between our high school boys and junior high boys in athletics. One teacher observed Bryson is always willing to help the staff and students. He is kind to others, he is dependable, and he is selfless. It is a selflessness, it is his selflessness, dependability, and kindness that makes him such an outstanding role model for his peers. And Bryson's dedication, leadership, and positive attitude makes him a deserving candidate for this award. Cliff Schools is proud to nominate Bryson as their Cuana's Student of the Month. Appreciate your pen, this is a real nice pen, doesn't lose that. Wonderful. This is a copy of the school. We have your insurance certificate from there, and here's your Sonic card. Now, here's a deal, you've got siblings and now parents, so I would put this away somewhere. Or no one will get it. Congratulations, Bryson. If you will go this way, they will state your name and congratulate you.
Congratulations.
Bryson, you know I'm gonna take a picture. Ever I doubt. I should think that. Okay, so they're gonna take a picture. You said yes. I mean, how tall are you? This time important, do you slouch? Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is our Cliff Athletic Director, Mr. Brian Shock, with the recognition of cross-country and golf athletes. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Hawkins, Ms. Lucero, Ms. McCain, Ms. Barris, Mr. Alvarez, Mr. Potts, we thank you for getting everything ready to go for us tonight. So I always say it's a great day to be a cowgirl or cowboy out here in Cliff. We love, love our community, we love our student athletes, and we've got a lot of kids doing a lot of great things. One of the best parts that I see in my job, not the best part filling out the Title IX report that requires a lot of work, but whenever we look at it and see that we're hitting seventy percent participation rate, or just a little bit below or a little bit above year after year, I mean, we're very, very excited about that. So, I mean, I give our kids a big round of applause for participating in many different things. They wear a lot of different hats. So I am gonna bring a few of them up. So if you guys are on the golf team or the cross-country team, if you guys will come up, I would love to have you guys standing up here with me. So we've got Raiden Thomas here, a senior cross-country runner. We've got Mike Myers, freshman, he's running cross-country and golfing. Sue Reed, cross-country. Hunter Kopchak, cross-country. Andrew, golf and cross-country. Zach, cross-country. Easton Kopchak, cross-country. And Bryson running cross-country. We don't have everybody here. I'm gonna talk about golf real quick. Stacy Baptiste has done a great job for us. We're in our fourth year of our startup. We were basically self-funded for the first three years, and now we're receiving operational funding. So thank you very much, Ms. McCain. We appreciate that. We can attend all, I think it's close to ten tournaments. Last year, the year before, we only did the minimum with five because of travel and the cost. We've already participated in two. It is very exciting to go out on the track. We don't have a golf course out here, but we have practice. We're seeing anywhere from sixteen to twenty kids, and we have junior high kids standing at the fence wanting to play golf. So we're really excited to see that sport growing. I can't say enough for Lenz Moore at Scott Park. He's done a great job. You know, the Cobra coaching staff, the Silver coaching staff, the Denon coaching staff, the Boot Hills, just been really good with that program, and we appreciate that camaraderie with them. So far this fall, we played at a tournament at Pacocho Hills in Las Cruces. We had a full boys team and a full girls team. And then we hosted our Cliff High School Fall Classic. We're gonna host another one in the spring. And we were hoping to have a few more teams, but Ria Doso, Mescalera, there were a few other tournaments around the state. So it ended up just kinda being a Grant County deal, and it was ourselves, Silver High, and Cobra. And we actually, we put together a full varsity and a full JV team on both the boys', you know, the boys' side and the girls' side. So that was very exciting. At our tournament, Brooklyn Looney, she finished second overall. Brooklyn Bird finished third. Michaela Ullery, fourth, and Ryan Tedford, fifth. On the boys' side, Brendan Shock finished third, and Brett Baptiste, he finished fifth. So again, that kinda finished up our fall season. We will go ahead and play another five before district next year, or not next, well, it is next year, but in the spring, and then the state tournament basically will happen in May. So we're getting geared up for that. But it is important that we play more than five because they get to keep their five best scores. So playing in two extra tournaments, that'll allow them to throw out their too low or their too high scores or their too worst scores. So that will give them an advantage to try to qualify to state. These guys have worked really, really hard at, you know, making money. They've had a ton of food stands and fifty-fifties, and, I mean, they've been all over the place, the cake auction. And I give a lot of credit to the golf team, the coaches, the parents, everybody has done a great job. And really, I mean, we're seeing that as a pretty strong program within the state as far as participation. So we really appreciate you guys and, you know, look forward to, you know, continuing to grow golf. As far as cross-country, we're in our second year. Last year, we had both boys and girls at the state cross-country meet. And I'll say right now, cross-country and one A, two A is probably one of the most stacked classifications that you've seen. In the boys' race, there were almost a hundred and eighty runners compared to like four A, five A in the standalone classes. You know, they had anywhere from eighty to maybe a hundred. Our girls ran against a hundred and twenty-six. So, I mean, it is very tough competition. We have the biggest district in the state. We have fourteen teams in our district. And our boys, we finished fourth out of fourteen teams at district. Individually, Bryson Shock, he finished as the individual district champion. And then Raiden Thomas also finished in the top ten with sixth place. And then, of course, our full team, we had seven young men go and represent us at the state track meet. We did finish seventeenth, so I know the answer to that one, Bryson. But I will say that we finished fourth out of the Class A schools. The double A schools are very, very good. They've got some of the best runners in the state, all classes. So, you know, within our classification, I felt that we, you know, did very well within Class A. But we are still trying to build that program. On the girls' side at district, we had Cambry Shock. She finished seventh in the top ten. And then she qualified to state as an individual. We had a couple of girls move out of district, had a couple injuries, so we were short a girl for that score. But we do have a lot of junior high kids running, and we're excited about that. So we anticipate a full girls' squad next year. Cambry did move on. She finished forty-ninth at the state cross-country meet. And, you know, overall, it was a great experience, and these guys are kinda making a name for themselves as a sport of cross-country. Any questions?
Any question? Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Um.
Picture.
I was trying to get a picture of your focus in the picture. He says he ran all season in those golf kids, so he broke the band, now he's still very good. And they look like they ran all season, all over the state. Congratulations, you guys. Great job. Thank you so much.
Lot of miles.
Lot of miles.
Next up, we have our S H F Ag teacher and FFA advisor, Ms. Stephanie Moon, with recognition of the Silver High School FFA Ag Mechanics Students at National.
So hi, I'm Stephanie Moon. I'm the ag teacher at Silver. And so in the last week of October, I took a team of four individuals to the National Commission in Indianapolis, and they competed in the Ag Mechanics and Technology Contest, which is an extremely hard contest, not just in my opinion. They ranked twelfth in the nation. There was forty-four teams that competed, and they were in the gold category. And so it's broke up in the top, broke up into thirds, gold, silver, bronze. They are also the highest ranking Ag Met team from New Mexico, which is very exciting. So the four students that I took, I took Walter Woodward, who graduated last year. He placed twenty-eighth with a gold ranking out of a hundred and seventy-two participants and had a score of one ninety point two-five. Catherine placed thirty-fifth and was also in the gold ranking out of a hundred and seventy-two with a score of one eighty-five point seventy-five. So she wasn't even a full five points behind her brother, by the way.
Minor detail.
Minor details. So that's like one question.
She's gonna get it.
I, I. We took Colter Massingale, who placed fifty-fifth and had a silver ranking and had a score of one seventy-four point seventy-five, so it's like ten points. They were all super close. I was very impressed. And then Troy Greeman placed one twenty-ninth and had a bronze ranking with a score of one forty-six point twenty-five. So they did amazing, absolutely amazing. And then Catherine is gonna tell you a little bit about what they did in the contest itself.
And so on behalf of our team, they, the rest of them couldn't make it, but we are so thankful for you guys' support. So in our competition, we did a lawnmower diagnostic, a structural welding, surveying, electrical wiring, engine repair, a math test, and our team activity was pouring concrete. And we are so thankful for the opportunity because, like, the amount of knowledge that we gained can't be replaced. So thank you.
Thank you, Bill, our Ag Met coach. He couldn't make it today. It's his birthday, but yes, thank you for all the time and money he spent on us.
Happy birthday, Bill.
Do you have any questions for us?
No.
No, just thank you for coming back in time for the.
Yeah, of course.
Super cool. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
What grade are you in?
I'm a senior.
You're a senior.
But you can still qualify for next year, this year, right?
Nope. Once they, once they win, they are done. So she gets to learn a whole new contest.
Okay, so then you can qualify for a different.
Yes. I got her commits to do pasture range. That's where we look at the land and evaluate it for beef cattle.
Wow. And what does your team look like that you're leading this year?
I think that we have Arena Rogers and Zanelle Rendelman. I'm not sure if you have, this is my first year doing it, so I don't know.
So we start that.
Anything about it, but.
We started January.
Start in January?
Yes.
Right. I appreciate your height.
Well, thank you very much.
Do you wanna get in the picture so that we make you look better?
You have to go so. Chris, Lisa? I don't even have to stand on my toes. This is great. Oh, wait, fuck.
Actually, you get the focus on the two.
That was actually, I have shiny. Did y'all notice how she was pointing down?
I know.
Great job.
Can I share something? Yes, so thank you.
Next up, we have our Director of Transportation and Maintenance, Mr. Antonio Anasolo, presenting our review of our preventative maintenance plan, and welcome.
Madam President, members of the board, esteemed colleagues, many members, thank you guys for coming. I'm super nervous. In your board packet was a copy of the preventative maintenance plan that was submitted to. In your board packet was a copy of the preventative maintenance plan that was submitted to New Mexico Public Schools Fund Facilities Authority. We have submitted it already, so it is now listed as current in the state's systems and databases. The plan rated overall outstanding, which is a rating exceeding the statute of performance elements. We have to do a preventive maintenance plan every twelve months. In our preventative maintenance plan, overall, out of twenty points, we received, well, out of forty-four points, we received forty, so we did a pretty good job. I had the help of our facilities manager, Bill Sorrell, who was able to also help me with this, seeing that it was my first year, the first one being done. He was super helpful, and so was everyone on the staff, who was able to provide me with information to get it going. It is, other than the template that did change, a lot of the preventative maintenance plan is the same with updates to our new facilities master plan. So we did make some adjustments based off the facilities master plan, and that our focus is to maintain our facilities based off of the facilities master plan and make improvements also based off the facilities master plan. One of the things that they did recommend for us was our training catalog, that we have just a better record for our training of our staff. We will be working with Pumps and Associates to provide more training to our maintenance and custodial staff, so that way it's up to par and can get us hopefully to a four-to-four next year out of the forty points.
Any else?
Nope, that's all I got.
Questions for us? Is anybody putting up questions for Mr. Anizola?
You briefly mentioned the necessity of the preventative maintenance plan, not only because it's required, but also its impact as it relates to us presenting to PSCOC and needing the requirements for the district waiver.
When the PSCOC looks at our school to see if they're going to front some of the bill for some of our equipments to our facilities, they do look at our preventative maintenance plan to take a look at what our processes are, to make sure that we're meeting ICAW state standards. They also take a look at our work order system and our work order processes to make sure that we're completing work orders that they've designated as high priority for our schools. So we can go up in ranking, well.
Down.
Down, up, in ranking when we complete major tasks, screw repairs, different HVAC equipment, when we replace those things, it just hires our standard in our facilities planning. And then it just makes them more inclined to want to help us when we go out asking for money.
I do have a question specifically to that point. Whenever we met with the PSFA and we were talking about the updates that we had made over the last forty-five years, I specifically, I think it was Jose Barrios, but maybe some other schools, did that come into play with this plan? Were they able to see the stuff that had been done and was not showing in their database at the time?
Some of the stuff that had been done, we did have to produce pictures and send them to them, so that way they could update their system that they had been taking care of.
Okay, and then I think Patrick has a question as well.
Madam President, Antonio, thank you for the presentation, but all this information, again, can you repeat who you submitted this presentation?
The preventative maintenance plan gets submitted to the New Mexico Public School Facilities Authority, and they help do our rankings.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Save it now for the hat.
Thank you all.
It's okay. Last item on our programs and presentations is our FFA president, Ms. Diane Kiriko, and she has nothing to present at this time or tonight. So we will move on to information to the board, Superintendent Mr. Lon Hopkins, with the PSCOC presentation update.
This past week, I had the pleasure of traveling up to Santa Fe with Michelle McCain and Antonio Anizola to make the, I would say, the second component of our process for addressing the CLIF project in our facilities master plan. So the first component was to submit a letter of intent to our, to the PSCOC regarding initiating the planning and designing phase of our CLIF schools project with the intent to rebuild and replace CLIF schools. Through that process, they came out to CLIF schools, they didn't walk through, reevaluate our facilities as well to, I would say, to reaffirm the ranking as well as to get a good understanding of our project. They'd been back, they'd been out here in 2017, so they came back out. From that particular project, from their visit, we then had to go present a fully-formed plan for our request for the CLIF school project. We did that last Tuesday. It was a pretty intense moment. You have to present and sell what it is we are trying to accomplish, and I think I only had about fourteen minutes to do the entire presentation, but I think I had over twenty, twenty-two slides. Antonio was there, and so he was prepared to poke me if I ran over on time. And fortunately, I did not. I know it's gonna be hard to believe, but I was able to be concise and clear in that period of time. We got a really positive feedback from PSCOC regarding our presentation. Within it, we focused on the buildings, the process that we would do as a community to, for the bond process, as well as projecting and addressing enrollment needs and rightsizing of CLIF as a component of it. I was very clear that while we would be able to contribute significantly to the planning and design phase, that it is really incumbent upon the PSCOC to fully fund via waiver the construction side. That was the main purpose of that conversation, and they were really positive. CLIF schools has been on their radar for a number of years, and so they're excited. They were, I don't think I embellished here, but they were excited to see this project brought before them. On December sixteenth, I have a return to Santa Fe, where the Public Schools Finance Authority will make their recommendations to the Public Schools Capitality Council, PSCOC, for the project approvals. The project approvals will include the Harrison Roof Project, including fire alarms, fire alarms at La Plata, the GW Stout Library, and the other components where we need to have the fire alarms. A feasibility study as we begin the process of addressing the consolidation in town, and then, of course, the planning and design for those schools. And so after the PSCOC approves, organizes, however they address, on the sixteenth, approve, right? We will then come back to the community, I would say, in early fall, right after the holiday break, the fall, spring, winter, spring. We'll get back together in January, and we'll begin the process of putting together a committee slash task force as we begin the designing phase of the project. It's exciting, right? Because it's gonna go fast and slow at the same time, because designing schools takes time. But we'll have the right voices and right people in the room for CLIF, and including staff, students, and community to go through that process. And then my hope is, by this time next year, we are standing before the PSCOC prepared to go to construction.
Any questions for Mr. Hopkins? Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Next item on our agenda is the Associate Superintendent, Mr. Luis Lataz, with our personality report.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Hopkins.
Is it green?
Okay, awesome. Okay. Before you is our personality report. We've been working feverishly, but we're still at ninety-eight percent. This is due to influx of special ed students that, of course, require one-on-one aids, so we're still at ninety-eight percent, but have filled some vital positions, and we're continuing to interview as we see.
Awesome. Any questions to Mr. Hopkins?
I'm trying.
We're probably in a better predicament than most schools in the state.
Yes, it just came out on Action Center News that they're still looking for a hundred and seventy-three teachers in Alabama, so we are very fortunate.
We are, we are very fortunate. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Mrs. Cindy Vares, Associate Superintendent, with our enrollment update, and then with our first PD update, Milestone One, and she will be presenting on behalf of our mental health coordinator, Mrs. Joyce Sotella. And this section of our agenda, you are limited to two minutes for every presentation.
Challenge accepted. So, Madam President, for some strange reason, my computer is not connecting. It won't allow me to then, so, but we do have all the presentations in front of you. So, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Hopkins, colleagues, and I'd love that out in the club, you guys all come. So thank you for coming. We're not presented to an empty room. So the first information I'm gonna give you is about enrollment. Now, the enrollment that was in your board book is a little bit off. So I saw the number, and I kind of freaked out a little bit, so I took it again, and so we had some adjusting due to, like, Nova and things with that. So we're only about, you know, three to five students down, three students down. And so there are adjustments, again, I'm the girl who loves patterns, there is not a pattern. And so I can't, I can't find one. There was a large shift at the ninth grade, but we had some, when we were looking at Nova, we had some students who were still in the system that shouldn't have been in the system. So we were doing still some cleanup there. Nova and the, you know, what is it, the thirty-day, sixty-day report, a forty-day report, thank you, we're now way beyond that, but we're still working on that. So that's, that's that cleanup piece. So you have the new numbers, and this was as of Friday. So when I posted them in board books, those were as of Wednesday, so I tried to get it out earlier for you to review, but I'll always pull the information out there. So that is for enrollment. Do you have any questions on enrollment?
Any questions for Ms. Vares on enrollment? That's it.
Okay, moving on to November one. November one was a county-wide PD. Now, this is our second venture into the county-wide PD, and I'm so excited about what happened there. So if you look at the first, you know, you don't mean my quotes, people working together in strong community with a shared goal and a common purpose can make the impossible possible. As, as our friends out in CLIF can see, we're trying to bring a new school to CLIF, which, you know, we always wanted that, and so here we are, finally making a dream possible. But that's what happens when the community comes together. And so when we say that, it's not just our community, we're a Grant County community. So we have our teachers from Silver Consolidated, we also had teachers from Cobray, we also had teachers from Aldo, we also had teachers from Calvary, we also had teachers from Montessori. And so it was an amazing thing to see. We did the Anna Age Eight presentation, which was ACIS, Adverse Childhood Experiences, and so we had great conversation around that. And there's a link in the presentation that was shared with you, and you don't mean, share it with you again, but there's a link to the book there, so you can get that information. I don't know what's happening, but thanks, Ben. And so when we take a look at that piece, so you'll have that link there. And so it was a really great presentation to see where we are. The Anna Age Eight Institute is here in New Mexico, so it's very relevant. All the information was relevant. We also had providers, health providers, that came to listen to that because it is, it is so powerful, and talk about, you know, kind of the experiences we see, and gave us strategies that we could use in our classroom to support students with, you know, adverse childhood experiences. So in the afternoon, and then Freeport was amazing, donated lunch to all of us. It was, it was absolutely amazing. And so we had sandwiches, we had dessert, we had salads, and, and they just kind of stepped up and took care of the entire Grant County communities, so no questions asked. They were, Mr. Hopkins put out the request, and they were there in a hot second. The afternoon were PLCs, so Aldo went back to doing what they were, what they were doing for the rest of the day, and so did Calvary. But Cobray and Silver got together in, in grade levels. And what I heard from all of the people, I got to go in and take pictures, but I heard, what I heard from all the people was it was really exciting to talk to other teachers, not just within our district, but to see what they were doing in others. And they had some really, really great opportunities to share all the good things here, and then to learn more over there. And so we heard, what I heard back from them was, could we please do that for us again? Because they really enjoy it. I'm gonna be honest, I was very nervous about that, as I'm, you know, always nervous when I present to you, but, but that one, I would think I slept for a couple of days on that one, because I was, I was just so worried on how it would go, and it, it really went swimmingly, especially in elementary, they could really get down and talk about some very specific things. And then as I was going, as I was coming back from Lon Clark, because we did the Ritchie and Teaching Voice, the social workers and mental health people talked about how powerful it was to talk to the people from Cobray as well. So, WIMU, I cannot, I cannot thank them enough. They gave us a run of the campus. I asked them for twelve rooms, and no questions asked, they gave, they opened up twelve rooms quickly. We were all over there, and the employees were telling us, we haven't been, this, this campus hasn't been this busy in a long time, so they were so excited to have us there. But everyone was so gracious, and the rooms were amazing, and then we had to change up a few, and they were just all over it. So that, that was wonderful. Do you have any questions about November one?
Any questions?
Okay, so now we're moving on to Milestone One. Now, we're actually quickly getting into Milestone Two, and I promised the teachers, because they had worked hard, that I wouldn't be sending their data for Milestone Two. And here's why. Remember, we're building. We're building our assessments so they're relevant and meaningful to us. And what we realized with the change of platform, because we needed a platform that was more robust and could house more information and have more information for us, and one that's tied to our student information system. So when we go to pull certain groups, whether it be male, female, things like that, when we pull those groups, it pulls just quickly because it's connected to Tower School. So that's, that's kind of why we did that. But when we were making the adjustment in there, we had quite a few bumps. And so the teachers, what they did was, during their PLCs, they're able to weed out the questions they don't need, but I'm not able to do that yet in the data. So they're able to use the data that they need, but when it's visible to them, it's, it's very difficult. But what I can say is, I need to give a shout-out to fifth-grade math. They nailed it. They're, they're doing so much work, you know, the students, the teachers, but it, it really showed within the assessments. And you have to remember, these assessments are supposed to be, as we move along, are supposed to be indicative of what the state assessment should show. So how are we getting through to those standards? So, but with the adjustment that we needed to make, the teachers, I call them teachers, and they've taken it upon themselves, they're in the office all the time, so if you see random teachers in there, what they're doing is adjusting the assessment. So they're going in, I show them the assessment, they can't leave with it, of course. So I show them the assessment, they look at the questions and what standard they're associated with, and they say, yes, this is a good one. And so we had some really good conversation. They're adjusting, I was just reading an email from a science teacher, and they've adjusted their, their assessment, so we'll go in and clean up those adjustments, make them, they get to see the final product, and then they sign off, and that becomes Milestone Two. So we'll be doing that for two, three, and four, and then we'll go back and clean up Milestone One. And then after the end of the year, if they need to make any adjustments to their scope and sequence, which will then adjust the assessment, which is why we do it this way, we can go ahead and do that. So it's a, it's a year-long process. But they're, they're doing really well, and the teachers are really excited, and then their feedback is, is really curt, you know, so they can say, Cindy, this didn't go well, and tell me why, and then we can make those adjustments. When we're talking about a canned assessment, like in a math test in which we use to, you can't make those adjustments there. And so it's, it's really, you know, the leaders of that area are making those adjustments, and they're doing a great job.
Madam President, members of the board, I know what I'm doing here. Ms. Vares is working with the teachers, working through Milestone One, the teachers were very clear, and on the other side of Milestone One, working through it, like, okay, there's some concerns, whether it's a question or, or platform, you know, I appreciated how responsive Ms. Vares was, worked with the teachers, I am so appreciative of our teachers who are able to advocate, right, and reach out, so, okay, we're seeing this, are you seeing this? Being able to communicate, and then for them to get together immediately after, within their teams, to start making the corrections and adjustments, that's what you want, right? You want it to be a responsive assessment, you know, the worst thing that could happen is, oh, yeah, well, we don't have problems, just, just make it work, we'll do it, right? I appreciate the time. There are teachers there, so shout out to those teachers. You know, they're there on Friday, fourth, there was a teacher, Friday afternoon, who was there, gone here until seven o'clock, right? She came in, when Ms. Vares was gone, they show up, they get into the boardroom, they spread out, and right, they start working on those assessments. We always talk about the work that teachers put in, and the time and dedication. Those hours aren't quote-unquote hourly paid moments of time that they're investing. But they come in, they want to make sure that the data is reflective of what the students are being taught and learned, and it's through elementary through high school. So I just commend the teachers who have been taking the time to come in and do that. That's what we do. I appreciate it.
And they really are. And so when we first started, they struggled giving us feedback. I think they were afraid of what that feedback would look like. And now they have no problem telling me what they really think, and I value that. I value, I need to know what that really means, because it's been a minute since I've been in the classroom, and I'm not working with that data. They are. That's the piece that I think they're really starting to understand, is this is their data. This is their data to make adjustments with. This is their data to see where the students are. And so I'm really proud and I'm really honored to work in that group, because they do, they work hard. And some of them, you know, they ask, Cindy, can you come in on the weekend? Okay, you know, I'm down the street, so I'll be right there. You know, and so they're really, the effort that they're putting in, and they're so excited. So the teacher just asks, can I have Milestone One? No, not till we're done with two, like, three and four, and then we can go back. But they're just hungry to participate, which is not something that we were all used to before. And so I'm really excited about that.
Any questions for Ms. Vares on Milestone One?
I'm just wondering, what is the timeframe from like Milestone One to Milestone Two?
Nine weeks.
Okay, so it's nine weeks.
Nine weeks. So within the nine weeks, yes, so within that nine weeks grade span. So that's how they divvy up their scope and sequence. Like, in the first nine weeks, they should be teaching this, in the second nine weeks, they should be teaching this. And so that's what we look at. So when they did their scope and sequence, we build the assessment off of their scope and sequence.
So the Milestones Three and Four will come with a separate schedule?
With the nine weeks, yes. So that's why I say that.
You're a constant role in just like.
Yes. We're getting ready to hit Milestone Two, so they have that information. And some of them build their Common Formative Assessments off of that, so those are their quick checks within the classroom in between there. And so that's all for me. So finally, for the mental health, what I can tell you is I'm really excited. We just got back, and the wellness, the School-Based Mental Health Grant was able to pay for 30 of us to attend the Reaching and Teaching Voice at the Ron Clark Academy. And so those of you who have gone, this was different. It was really focused on reaching and teaching boys specifically. And so we had brain science, we had a lot of things. We did receive emails from teachers that were grateful. Thank you. One specific grade teacher said, "The best training she's ever had in 19 years." Really reignited. So those are the things that we're excited about, we got some great information. If you take a look at the total number of visits on your wellness room handout, we have 1,833 visits. And so we're really excited about the students who are using it when they need to use it. And so, and what we're looking at, and during the mental health PLCs, they take a look at who's using it and when. Is it the same student trying to get out of second period? Is it the same student right before they go to PE, right after lunch? So they're really trying to do those things and intervene. The Wellness Grant has also helped us renovate the lobbies. So we're able to do the common spaces to really make it look less institutionalized. So we're almost finished. We're working on, I think we've got to finish some stuff up here and at a couple of other places. But what we did was we went around and we asked the schools what they wanted. And so they were able to pick out and do things like that. And then once we got, we were getting the furniture set, because that's coming in in droves. Once we get the furniture set, then we look at things like greenery, things like that, just something to make it a little more inviting. So we're almost finished there. And then, of course, the wellness campaign with the SHAC committee update. So when you see those little flyers, the SHAC committee last year purchased, you know, you have a captive audience in the stall of a bathroom. So they purchased little frames to put these flyers in there for students, you know, just, you know, so students can think about their health and wellbeing. So we do the SHAC committee meets, and then they get the flyers out, and we get them. There are 200 postings, but, you know, it's a captive audience. So we've got nothing else to look at, so it's still right there in front.
Awesome. Any questions on any of the information that Mrs. Vares presented?
Madam President, sort of the whole questions. So our mental health grant is now paid for the staff training for the specific Ron Clark piece.
Yes, sir. So this year, the state is struggling to allow us to go out of state for training. And sometimes going out of state is closer for us than like going to Albuquerque, or to Phoenix is definitely closer, Tucson and things like that. So what we were able to do is use the Mental Health Grant to do the things we need to do. Ron Clark, the idea of Ron Clark is really the focus of culture and a sense of belonging for students and things of that nature. And so with that mental health piece, when we looked at, you know, Mr. Hopkins had said, when we surveyed our students, that was the biggest factor we had, you know, out of five points, and let's say it was like 3.2, and that was the lowest indicator we had, and that was that sense of belonging. So because of that, we can tie that to culture in that sense, and that's where the School-Based Mental Health Grant fits in. So that's this whole year, when we're sending aside from Sixth Street, because they've got their own grant with FII, everybody who goes comes out of that way.
And then going back to November One, professional development, was that a grant, or was that operational funds?
So, no, I think it was, I don't think we paid for that. We didn't pay for that at all. So we got it through some donations, we got it through, Syaheem Hill, Representative, sorry. Syaheem Hill last year provided that training for us. And so before she finished her term, this was something that she had kind of set forward. And so we, as Grant County Numbers, they took care of that legislatively. And then, of course, we got the donations, you know, Western donated their building, we got food donated, and so we didn't actually have to use a funding ticket for that.
Yeah, to be clear, right, the presenters who came in from, the presenters who came in from New Mexico State, Madam President, members of the board, and members of the elect. They, he, they afforded that cost, right? They paid for the travel. There was not an honorarium, which is amazing that he was able to come in. He was a co-author to the book as well as the project. So from that standpoint, Western donated facilities, resources, the staff that manned the fax facility, the setup, Freeport and their generosity, they are staff. So our Grant County educators got a really quality PD, a professional development, at no cost to Coburn or Silver.
That's awesome. Thank you.
That whole community, please. Any further questions?
Madam President, thank you, Mrs. Vares. I just want to comment. I want to thank Mr. Hopkins and his team, you and Mr. Aldo, as we're thinking outside the box. You think that New Mexico being created a 49/50 in education, that making another state where they're a little, to see what they're doing, what we can implement in education here in the state would be a non-brainer to lower our position status in education. So it just doesn't make sense why they would not approve that. But thank you for thinking outside the box for our students and our school district and Grant County. That's phenomenal.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. And Mr. Hopkins has brought it up to actually the Secretary of Education to just kind of put it out there for that information, so I am grateful to ask this.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Any other questions or comments? All right.
I love you. Director of Finance, Mrs. McShaw, can you do anything for this question?
No, not outside the consent agenda.
Thank you. Moving on to RNF for the Education Audit Subcommittee. We met last Thursday as regularly scheduled, 4:00 p.m., do the financial statements. I, because of this wonderful device that has held Ari for a little time, have to do manual work. So we had a few questions that Michelle and Martha were mostly prepared for, but they were like, really, you owe them today. But good conversation as always. We talked about budgeted numbers, also where we're looking at in our budget, questions about some expenditures, some items on the operational expenditure roll-up, as well as the board report. We are going to review the board budget next month and just see if we need to do any cleanup and look at how we are spending on the board. Anything else to add?
Now that I do, actually, Madam President, would like to add a thank you to Ms. McCain as far as our follow-up questions in the email and the questions that we had, so that was good. And we also discussed the overall benefit package and compensation on staff members and just the cost to the board, or to the district, to the district, and really the benefits that that adds to overall salaries.
A whole package. Yeah, thank you for that. Foundation, I forgot we did that. All right, so that's it. Any questions for us on the Finance Committee? All right. Next one is Audit Subcommittee. We did, Dr. Mcself met with the Audit Committee. It was last week sometime. I'm not sure. It was the Audit Essex meeting, and so that was a closed session, something that we won't discuss, but the audit has been completed, and I believe he said it was submitted to the state, is that correct?
It's on the table.
Perfect. Okay, yeah. So it's submitted, and then we'll have him back to present our audit when it has been approved by the state auditor. Next item, Threat Assessment Committee. Mr. McMillan, did you guys comment on the meeting?
Madam President, I believe we met on Wednesday, and I'll have to kick it over to Mr. Aldo to give us a summary. I was not able to attend.
Thank you.
Madam President, first of all, I apologize to Mr. McMillan, because a lot of times we end up having those, and they are during the day, so I apologize for the timing of that. We did discuss how all of our ALIS training, all of our staff, every two years, we do a full ALIS training, besides the videos and going through it. Then we do a hands-on portion. I'm happy to say that all of our schools in Silver Consolidated and Cliff, of course, are all ALIS trained. They did a great job. We also ended up having our security guards, our armed guards, that do carry. They had to go for qualifications again. They did qualify, so the range master did certify them. We still have one night qualification that we still have to do. And I have three members of our security staff that are going through training to go ahead and get their arms trained so that they can also carry. So I'm pretty sure our night qualification should go out, and the training should be on par. We also had a table talk exercise that involved Coburn, Silver, Aldo Leopold, Montessori. We ended up having a table talk exercise where we discussed what we would do in an active shooter situation. We had EMS, we had fire, we had a police as well, the sheriffs. It was some good conversation. There's been some conversation about reunification sites, if we should do a reunification site in a remote area such as Quik or San Lorenzo. That discussion point was taken. We kept that around for quite a while and decided that the resources are best utilized in the area where they are, so we will be transporting to the resource reunification site. And so that was decided and determined for both school districts. It was some good conversation from Aldo Leopold, and they had some good concerns being on the Western campus. And so we got some clarification from them as well. We also talked about our COPS grant and how we're moving forward, but we will be utilizing money from that for controlled access, which would be having key cards at certain doors to be able to go ahead and access. It will actually track who has that card. And if we lose it, we don't have to rekey the whole building, which costs tens of thousands of dollars. We just have to pay about $4 for a new card, so that's the direction that we're heading. We're also going to utilize our cameras. It was also discussed with our administration in sharing video footage from our cameras. Of course, nobody can record from our cameras footage without a subpoena, but we do share that so that the parents can see what we're talking about whenever we're dealing with disciplinary issues. And that was basically our agenda for our predecessor.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Any questions for Mr. Aldo?
Next item is for the President, so I will make it short and sweet. This morning, Mr. Hopkins and myself and Mrs. McCain were in Dallas to present to Mulis, which is our bond grading agency. And so, you know, it feels like we were just out here a year ago, really trying to lay the groundwork of the only way we can build your new school is to get to the 10 mil. And here we are a year later, and as Mr. Hopkins talked about earlier with the PSCOC, the PSFA that came out and did a site visit probably just about a month ago, us being in Dallas to do our bond grading. The wheels are really churning, and they're turning really quickly, and so it's very exciting. I don't even want to get emotional about it, but this has been a long time coming. And you guys were definitely on our list the last time. And we just didn't know what was going to happen. So I'm going to apologize, but it's happening, and it's happening quickly, and it's really exciting. So we're excited. And I'm excited. So I get emotional, but I just, I'm so happy that we were able to bring in the proper administration to ask the right questions, for the board to get educated, for the taxpayers to come alongside us, and grants, our ability to sell additional bonds to get to the 10 mil, because again, there is absolute, when you run the numbers, there is absolutely no possible way. And four, five, six years ago, when it was on our wish list, I can't put it in any other words, and that was on our wish list, it wasn't that we weren't paying attention, that we didn't see the need, it was that we were under-informed of the cost and our inability to issue enough bonds to even touch it. And so there's been many, many conversations that have had to happen to get us to this point. But we are so excited to be moving forward very quickly and aggressively. And I think there's nothing more exciting than hearing people come down from Santa Fe and saying, "We've been wanting to do this for years." And that just liquefies the fact, I know, sometimes that this community just feels like it's unseen, that it's unheard, that we, I don't think, I don't think with the current administration that you guys feel like you're the stepchild anymore. I really don't. I really hope that's not the case. But I know in prior administrations, you felt like that. And so I just, as the board chair and the president, and being on the board throughout this process, number one, an apology is due to these schools, but also an understanding that it was heard, we just didn't understand. We were a new board, and so a lot has had to happen, but it's happening, and it's really exciting. And by December, probably at our board meeting, we will have an approval from the PSCOC that they want to put a lot of money out and guarantee Clip. And within months, we will start having plans, and we'll bring people to the table to help us develop the plans and what's needed out here. We definitely need a room with hookups for this type of situation, because it's hard. But thank you for being patient with us, and thank you for partnering with us in this endeavor, because it's a huge lift, but we are all really, really excited to see Silver Schools be able to build a new school for Clip. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm trying not to cry.
It's just because I'm tired.
So I do want to thank the Clip community for your warm hospitality. It's always so welcoming to come out to Clip and just have a meeting out here to see, you know, all the residents and the students. You are so welcoming, you know, it's.
You are so welcoming, you know, it just feels like I work here and it's just, it's always awesome just, just to make it out here. Like Ashley said, thank you for partnering with us on this bond approval that was greatly needed. I'm excited for Cliff. This is just going to be extremely something exciting to look forward to with the staff and students and just the community itself. It's just what an honor, and I feel so honored to be part of that with you all. So I don't want time to quickly pass. I want to enjoy it and then sink a little bit because time goes by so fast. But I'm, I'm excited also for the students as they will gain institution that they're going to be very proud of. They're already proud of this campus already, but even the staff, but I can imagine, and I can picture in my head when the school is up, how proud you are going to be, and that makes me proud. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for the hospitality to the Cliff schools, the Cliff community. It's always a pleasure to come out here and visit and have a board meeting here. Couldn't say it any better than Mrs. Montenegro said, but I will say it's, I think, the majority of the kudos go to our superintendent, Mr. Hawkins, for all the number of meetings he had in the communities out here in Silver, because the first step had to be us getting to the Ten Mill. And we could not have done that without your leadership to provide the information to our communities and our schools. So, and, and then even after that was done, it was the very next day, it was like, all right, we got to get our application in. We've got to get, you know, the next step going. It wasn't, you know, there wasn't any kind of, okay, let's take a break or let's rest a little bit. It was like, he was, he was on it again. The very next day, we've got to get our application in. And it's so exciting to see this moving forward and that's, and it's all to our leadership, Mr. Hawkins. And we're so appreciative because we, we just didn't know how to, the process. And Mr. Hawkins knows the process and was leading us down that, that road. And they're excited to be where we're at now. So thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I just want to also just really reiterate what Mrs. Montenegro and my fellow board members have said and thank Mr. Hawkins. I got into this conversation a little bit later than everybody else, and I'm still trying to learn a lot of the processes. But I will say, listening to the students speak and just coming up here and feeling their excitement about just their different programs and the golf team and cross-country really does remind us why we're doing this. And so having that, putting that into perspective is huge for me. I will also say I'm shocked on how quickly of a process that this has gone, especially after the bond passed. As Mr. McNally stated, it was just within a matter of a day, there was already applications and processes going on. And so I really kind of expected it to kind of be a hurry up and wait type situation. But it has really been pushing forward, so I am very, very pleased with that. And I think it's going to, you know, just start, the ball is rolling and it's just going to just continue with great things for this community. So thank you. And thank you for everybody's community support with helping getting this done.
Yes, thank you, both board members. The next portion of our agenda is open public comment. There is a process to do so. If you would like to address the board, we do have an open public comment form. I have not received anything online. How about you, Lisa? No comments at this time. So if you would like to address the board this evening before you depart, if that was your intent, that is available to you. We have another section later on in our board meeting, so you're welcome to do that. And I'm sure you can find a form over there by the front door. All right. Action items. Consent agenda approval of budget finance purchasing. Our Director of Finance, Mrs. McShaw, McCain, I will turn it over to you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to try to make this as quick as possible because I was on the same page with them and I'm running out of steam.
She's not going to cry, though.
They're good numbers. My, my first item for approval is our checks written in the month of October twenty twenty-four. We have checks for approval in the amount of three million seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. I have quite a list of budget adjustments for this month. Shortly before our last board meeting, I, we were awarded a little bit more carryover for our Title I funds in which we're going to put into our tutoring. We are going to, we have an additional five thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars to get into the Title I budget. We, in April, we were awarded through the DFA department at the Public Ed, kitchen equipment and infrastructure grant. Our student nutrition department, the cafeteria, has been awarded a hundred thousand dollars to do any kind of, to design, plan, construct, renovate, furnish and or equip there at any of our public school kitchens with the funds from this grant. We also have in our operational budget, I am asking for an increase in the operational budget because we received funding from our E-rate that is above the initial hundred thousand dollars that I had put in budget. It has revenue coming in from our E-rate down through our technology department. And so we'll have an additional two hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars and twenty-six cents going into our operational budget. We also have our REC, we have a Head Fellows program, which is calling our own teachers, giving our instructional assistants the opportunity to go to school and become teachers during the school year. And through the REC, we were originally funded for two of our instructional assistants. We now have four that are participating in the program, and so we need to increase staff budget by ninety-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. And then on our family income index grant, every grant that we have, we're required to write an application. We, Cindy is required to write an application. I, I work with the numbers. She works with the, the program. And family income index is one of those, that one is directed at the Sixth Street, yes, this year. And so when we originally write it, we're writing, now I'm building a budget, and we're writing these applications in February and March of the year prior, prior to the school year starting. And so along the way, we have to make some tweaks, depending with, you know, either what's going on during the school year or the students that we have at that time. So while we're not adding to the family income index budget, we are adjusting it to allow for added student travel so that the kids can have some field trips, some learning field trips that they can go to. And then my final bar that I'm asking for approval on is our D and B budget. And that is just, once again, funding to cover some additional software that they found that what they thought would be more beneficial for some of our students. And so while that's not an increase, we do ask for permission to implement that. The final item, I don't have any awards or bits and proposals this time, but we do have a wonderful laundry list of donations for which I seek appreciation from our community for the help that they're giving our schools. We have the Hiller Companies, who gave Silver High Lady Coats basketball five hundred dollars. Silver High, Silver City Dental, who gave the Lady Coats basketball five hundred dollars. Silver City Muselage gave our resource center clothing bank five hundred dollars. And the Assas Funeral Tackles gave our Lady Coats basketball team five hundred dollars. Uvar Ranch gave our football festival five hundred dollars. Dr. Victor Wachipo gave the Silver High Basketball Pearls five hundred dollars. The Silver City Muselage gave the Silver High Basketball Boys a thousand dollars. And Amplified Therapy gave Football Festival two thousand five hundred dollars. And so for all of these things, I ask for your approval and for the donations, your appreciation.
Thank you. Motion for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Madam President, I move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Mrs. Clement. Any discussion?
Again, thank you to all our sponsors and donations. We greatly appreciate that.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mr. McNally. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passed. Item number B, with the Mr. Antonio Dezola with Transportation and Maintenance. If we had any bus drivers, activity drivers, or pederops, there are none this evening. The next opportunity for open public comment is now. I do not receive anything yet. Future meeting, proposed agenda items. Our next private committee meeting will be December twelfth. Our next regular work session and board meeting will be December sixteenth. The NMSBA Annual Convention in Albuquerque at the Ovis this week, since December fifth through seventh. Please let me know if you are intending to attend, as well as the twenty twenty-five Board Member Institute in February in Santa Fe, February thirteenth through fifteenth. Lots of events going on here at Cliff and also in Silver, middle school basketball, high school basketball, some fall festivals. We're all getting ready for the Thanksgiving holiday. And so lots of things to do if you so intend and would like to join in. The next section is our executive session. The board may like to go into executive session for reasons permitted. And then Mexico Open Meeting Backs, the NSA nineteen seventy eighth section ten dash fifteen dash one, page one through nine. Mr. Hawkins, do you have any?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
President, the date on the annual convention, is that the correct date or is it the following? It is, I think it's the twelfth.
Okay.
Yes, that is incorrect. Just two. I'm just.
December twelfth.
Getting concerned about my schedule, the eleven through the thirteen, or the twelve through the fourteen.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're good. Thanks, everybody. Okay. Executive session. No reason to go into executive session. I would like, for the record, last month, when we came out of executive session, I said that no action was taken, and no action was taken. But Mr. Hawkins' oral, oral evaluation, also no mess. Mr. Hawkins, Mr. McNally. Santa Fe, the positive. For this month, evaluation was conducted. No action was taken, but I do need to mention that for the record. We will not be going into executive session tonight, so a motion for adjournment is requested.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Khan. Do I have a second? Who was the second? Second, Mrs. Clement. Any discussion? Seeing none. Patrick, please, your role call.
Mrs. Montenegro?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz? Myself, yes. Mr. McNally, yes. And Mrs. Clement.
Yes. We are adjourned, and it is seven thirteen Q. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.